All right, welcome and good afternoon. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Environmental Support Division of Eagle, and I'll be moderating today's public hearing. And today's public hearing is a triennial review of Michigan's water quality standards. But before we get started with the public hearing, I just have some logistical things to go through for you. All right, we're going to go through a quick introduction. That's what we're doing right now. And then the public hearing is kind of divided into two parts. We first have informational session. Will it be a presentation for about 15 minutes, followed by any questions and answers that you might have? And then we're going to talk about ways to submit an official comment other than the hearing today. And then there is the official hearing part, and that's the part where you're going to have a chance to make a statement for the record for this hearing today, and then we're going to go ahead and close it out. For those of you who weren't familiar with Zoom, all lines are muted during the hearing, so you'll be able to hear us, but we won't be able to hear you. As I mentioned before, at the end of the presentation, we're going to have a question and answer period. So you'll be able to type those questions into your Zoom toolbar, but you'll also be able to raise your virtual hand in Zoom, and I can call on you, and you'll be able to ask your question. And then also just here where we are recording this hearing, it will be posted on our YouTube channel, and you should receive a link where you'll be able to watch it again, or if you missed the part, you can re-watch it. So that will be available to you. And with that, I would like to invite Kevin Goodwin and Don Roush, our WRD staff, to introduce themselves, and we'll get this started.
I have trouble others. Hi, my name is Don Roush. I work for Eagle and am the supervisor of the Lakes Erie Huron and Superior Unit. There are several statewide monitoring activities tasked to this unit, one of those being the coordination of our water quality standards, which includes the triennial review process.
And I am Kevin Goodwin. I'm an aquatic biology specialist in the Water Resources Division. I worked in Dawn's unit. And a couple of the roles that I play in our team is one, coordinating our assessment and reporting biennially to the EPA of water quality. That's the 303D, 305B, 314 Integrated Report as it's known. And then the other hat I wear is coordination of water quality standards, and so that's the role I'm playing here today. To kind of go through a little bit of a presentation about that and listen to comments if you've got any. So with that, we'll start off. I've put together kind of a short presentation, as Ryan said. And what I'd like to do really is use this as a chance to kind of discuss what the trainer review is, what the process is in terms of collecting comments and how we kind of work through those. And even use this as a chance really to talk a little bit about what water quality standards even are, just to kind of make sure that people have, you know, similar understanding and come from a similar place on these things. So the training review is an opportunity, as it says here, to comment every three years on places where folks think that revisions, additions, changes, things like that are needed in Michigan's water quality standards. This is a requirement of Clean Water Act. And again, we've got estates and authorized tribes have to do this at least every three years. And so part of that process is holding a public hearing, which is what we're doing now, and also having an open public comment period. And they serve, you know, kind of different avenues to the same role road. So it's basically trying to, you know, give opportunities for comment thoughts on these things. So that's kind of the public facing part of it. And then additional role that we've got to play in this is to make sure that we're reviewing as part of our training review, whatever criteria the US EPA has either developed or revised in kind of like those three-year batches too. So so we will not only be taking a look at the comments that we received, but we'll also be taking a look at anything that the US EPA has updated. This this review period is 2018 through 2020. So we're looking at that window and responding to you on whether we've adopted those, if not, why and things like that. So that's kind of the spectrum of the training review. Next slide, please. So we'll start with water quality standards. Ultimately, a water quality standard is kind of the primary tool within the Clean Water Act to both kind of maintain water quality, but also bring it back to conditions that we'd like to restore them. It can be a numeric, it can be a number, it can be a statement of condition. But but the standards themselves, and I'll describe kind of the parts of the standard, but they're designed really to protect water quality for water bodies, for the uses of those water bodies, kind of designated uses is what we call them. Next slide, please. So let's start with designated uses. This is the what is protected. What is it that we're trying to to make sure that our water bodies support? In Michigan, we call them designated uses. Other states have similar but different terms. But ultimately, it's kind of the, you know, it's the values that are placed on the water bodies and their use. Whether that's a societal value, an actual kind of consumptive type value, things like fish consumption, agriculture for irrigation, navigation, industrial water supply, things where society were actually using the water for these things. Or if it's just sort of ecological function use, so things like our warm water and cold water fishery uses are one that's kind of a mouthful in Michigan is this other indigenous aquatic life and wildlife, which is sort of this kind of catch-all use to protect sort of the overall ecology of lakes and streams and wetlands and their function. And these uses then are applied to all waters in Michigan. Now, of course, we've got, you know, some subclasses of that with things like cold water uses applying to cold water rivers or cold water lakes and things like that. But by and large, these are, these uses are applied to to all waters. Next slide, please. So that's the what we protect, those different uses. Talk a little bit about how we protect them. And this is often like the how is what I think most people equate when they think of water quality standards. They can be called criteria. Other folks just kind of shorthand them as standards. Ultimately, they're the numeric numeric or narrative goals that are set for the waters. And so these these numeric values or thresholds, these narrative conditions are all designed still to protect those designated uses. So they're they're kind of the goals of what the specific water quality goals that then feed back into the designated use protection. And again, these apply to statewide in Michigan to all water body types with that caveat, you know, that certain cold water things are only applied to cold water and warm water, things like that. The other way we use these numeric and narrative criteria are in evaluating water quality, trying to understand whether we're meeting those thresholds, whether we're supporting those uses. So it gives us something to test against essentially, and that's how we protect those uses. Next slide. So we get asked a lot, and I throw this in here just kind of as an illustration. When we talk about these multiple uses and then all the different actual criteria that apply to them, numeric or narrative criteria, we get asked a super logical question from a lot of people, which is what's water quality like in Michigan or in my lake or in my stream? And while that's a very logical question, the the interesting part for those of us who are really steeped in this is that 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 question can be answered at so many levels. And so it's not just a good answer. It's a it gets back to those uses first. What is it that you're interested in from a water quality perspective? So we'll step through the slide a little. Can you next slide, please? From, and this is, I'm going to be layering kind of some of those different designated uses because really the answer to this, like, how's the water quality? What's it like? Can be answered at any one of these levels. So we're talking about it from an ecological perspective. That's one answer. These slides are kind of just illustrative. They're, you know, but generally blue is good, red's not good in terms of monitoring. These are just some old data, but but so there's one answer. If people say, how, what's the ecology like in our lakes and streams, things like that? That's, that's, that's one answer. Next slide. But if people want to know what fish consumption is like around the state, that's a different picture. Because of really broad issues with PCBs and mercury, not only in Michigan, but this is pretty common throughout a lot of the US. We've got a lot of fish consumption advisories. So that's a different kind of an answer. So if your question is, how's the water quality for eating fish? That's a different answer. Next slide, please. And then we've got these cold water, warm water fisheries. What's the condition of the fish community? You know, how might it be to go fishing? And what's it like for that? Next slide. So each one of those has its own answer. And then next slide. And then we've got a very common one too, which is, is it safe to go waiting? Can I go swimming? Things like that. Those are other uses. So those are uses that talk about body contact, whether it's partial for things like waiting for fishing or next slide or total body contact, which is kind of swimming and things like that. So just to kind of set that stage and be aware that when we're talking about water quality and we're talking about these designated uses and goals, I've always kind of likened it to thinking about it like onion skin, you know, because it's not just, it's tough to provide an answer because it really gets back to, so what is it that you're concerned about or interested in, or, you know, what kind of use are we talking about? And we've got answers for each one of these. So that's just sort of setting the stage. All right, next slide, please. So the third part of water quality standards, we've got designated uses, we've got the criteria. And then there's a component to the standards that needs to be in there that's essentially make sure we don't go backwards in water quality, which is how do we protect the existing water quality? If it's good, we want it to stay good. And if it's not, we want to figure out how to restore it into a better condition. And this is our anti-degradation rules, essentially ways that we maintain existing uses and figure out how to protect the high water quality and then also get waters that maybe aren't there working towards that condition. So that's our anti-degradation. Next slide, please. So we've got three components, and this is, this is a Clean Water Act must. All water quality standards, whether it's state, other states or authorized tribes, have these components to their water quality standards. And so the designated uses is one, whatever people call them designated or beneficial in their in their jurisdiction. The criteria are another, and anti-dag is a third. And so those things where they overlap, that's when we say water quality standard, that's what we're talking about, is that sort of set of rules that encompasses kind of all these, all these important components. I think often people think of it just as criteria. But it's, I just like to say, you know, kind of put it out there, it's all three components. And it's that it's that intersect that really are what we're talking about today. So next slide. Another thing is want to make clear are the differences between standards and limits. So our water quality standards really, again, set these ambient goals, describe thresholds and the uses and things like that we're trying to maintain. And they're focused on ambient water quality. This is not discharge water quality. This is water quality out in lakes and streams, rivers and wetlands. And so those are the standards. Now, limits come into play. We're talking typically about permits, usually through the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System and PDS. But the the limits are really goals for effluent, you know, and constraints that are put around effluent discharge and things like that. Now, they're they're linked. You can't have limits generally without the standard because the standards provide that goal, provide that kind of background information. What is it that we're trying to achieve in water quality in a in a lake or river that somebody is discharging to? And so knowing what those thresholds are and those goals for the ambient water allows us to then use another set of our rules, the Part Eight rules, to to kind of figure out how you implement those those standards into permit limits. But the two are not the same. So just to be clear here, we talked about the water quality standards. And then we have our Part Eight rules, which is where we figure out how to develop the limits that are potentially needed for for permit deeds. And again, the two are are linked, but not, they're not the same. So we're talking really about standards typically. All right, next slide, please. So let's talk about what's open for public comment and review as part of our training review. We have kind of both sets of rules that are related to water quality standards open for comment or suggestions. And that's both the Part Four Water Quality Standards, those kind of three component. And then the Part Eight Water Quality-Based Effluent Limit Development for Toxic Substance, the process by which we kind of take the information from the Part Four rules and 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 push it through Part Eight to figure out whether or not permit limits are needed or anything like that within the NPDS permit program. So that's what's open for public comment. Next slide, please. I've gotten the question, what makes a good comment? What makes a helpful comment? I think, I hope that the goal for anybody who's interested enough to make a comment on this is that we're always striving towards increasing water quality and and things like that. So I think good comments not only have, here's what we think should change or should get better or should get tweaked or revised, but the why a little bit. I think I think having some sort of understanding of the goals basing that on that information and your comment on things like data and facts versus just like, I don't feel like this is fair or right. It's much more helpful. And obviously, you can, people can make whatever comment they would like. That is up to you. But we're talking about how to make comments that are also useful, understanding with the goals of those comments, what is it that we're trying to get to by making these changes or these concerns? I think it's pretty good helpful. So I'd say just kind of keep that in mind. If you plan on submitting comments, whether that's today or we'll talk about different ways to submit them in writing, email, things like that. Just think about, you know, kind of using information to support that, citing specific things that you think should change, and then, you know, some perspective on 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 why. I think that's, I think that's helpful. It's not necessary. You can submit them however you'd like. But I think from a utility standpoint, this is kind of the the kind of things we'd like to like to read. Next slide, please. So what happens next in this process? The public comment period ends the 21st, which I believe is next Tuesday. And we'll review all submitted comments, whether they come through this webinar hearing or come in written written form other ways. And then we'll also be reviewing, as I said, in kind of a three-year chunk, anything that the US EPA had revised or developed for criteria in that 2018 to 2020. As far as I know, I think it's aluminum and a couple of cyanotoxins were numbers. So so that will be kind of the the bulk of what we review when we kind of go through and take these comments in and summarize this information ultimately and submit it to the US EPA to kind of to show the kind of comments that we got, what our response to those has been and kind of what the plan is, if anything, for certain things. So next, please. An important part of this is that at this time, the Eagle and our division doesn't have rulemaking authority for these water quality standards. And that is not a new thing. That's been since 2006. That was legislatively removed. So we often get the question, you know, we'd like to provide comments, but you have this, you know, lack of rulemaking authority. That's correct. I think at this point, what this helps us do, these comments help communicate the priorities and focus and interest from the greater public and and kind of start to build a list of where things might need to change if they do in the future, if we rulemaking back. So if nothing else, they they help communicate to the department our, you know, kind of priorities and making sure that we're not missing out on things that are important to the greater public. But one of the things to kind of get back to what makes a good comment, the the goal part of that is helpful because I think just because at this point, we don't have rulemaking authority, having a perspective for not only what we think changes would be helpful within the rules, but also why starts to help to inform us as well, because there are places that we can still continue to advance within kind of our water quality standards, our assessment, things like that. We have always had the ability through a lot of our narrative criteria within our water quality standards to continue to be responsive to need. And this is nothing new. So things like our nutrient narrative nutrient criteria, which describes a condition that we want to avoid and or achieve depending on what you read it in Michigan still allows us then to be, I think, fairly responsive to kind of advances in science and find ways that we can do monitoring better and and be more thorough in our assessments, things like that. Similarly, the way we develop values, water quality values for our toxic parameters in Michigan, which again is spelled out in our rule and has been for 20 years or more, we can use that process to continue to be responsive to developing values that are protective for new and emerging contaminants and things like that. So so just because we don't have the rulemaking authority, I think it's still important to submit comments to help again, express priorities, express concerns, things like that, that help us kind of build that list. And also understanding what the goal and what the desire is from a conditional standpoint, what is it we're trying to achieve with these changes if we can make them? Because there may be ways that we can still work on on those issues, sort of even without the rulemaking authority. So just kind of a little background there too. Next slide, please. And that kind of wraps up my sort of intro presentation. Again, just kind of a chance to talk about, sort of set the landscape for what we're talking about here from a comment perspective. And I guess at this point, we'd be opening up for questions and answers, just kind of have a discussion. If there's anything that, any clarification, anything you'd like to ask.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, thanks for that presentation as well. Before we get into the Q and A, just want to remind people how to ask a question. You can submit your questions using the Q and A box in the Zoom toolbar, which should be at the bottom of your screen or to be on the right-hand side. And then you can also click the hand icon. So if you click that hand icon, it'll raise your virtual hands, and then we can call on you to unmute yourself. And then you can unmute yourself and ask your question. I don't believe we have anybody on the phone right now, but if anybody's calling in, you can also type pound two to raise your virtual hands, and we'll call on you that way. So feel free, you know, to either raise your hand or type your questions in Zoom and we'll go ahead and start. And I have one question so far here. And it says, curious to learn about WRS upcoming priorities. Maybe that should be WQS or is WRS?
Yeah, I don't know WRS is, so whether that's, is that WR? I don't know if they can clarify because it's either could be WRD, WRD or WQS.
That's true.
So
WQS.
Okay.
Water quality standards.
You know, I think the the bulk of what we, our staff constantly work at are things like updating our toxic values and toxic parameters. We're actually, by way of that, working almost right now on trying to better update what's, it's called our Rule 57, which is the rule within our water quality standards that describes the process by which we update toxic parameters. And so that's where a lot of activity happens there to kind of continue to to update based on new science and new toxicology data. That program then develops a list kind of each year of what what kind of parameters they're going to be looking to review to update or create new values for and things like that. And we're working right now and trying to update that webpage to make that a little bit more transparent so that people can see like, what is it over the next year? What what specific parameters from a toxic standpoint are we looking at? And so hopefully that'll be be helpful. And, you know, I think it's fair to say that nutrients continues to be a big, a big area of interest and concern for the division. And so we've got a lot of work going on there to try to understand how to better assess water bodies, how to better kind of understand what it is in the field, out in the water that that is helpful to kind of support our narrative narrative criteria for nutrients. So we've got a lot of things going on there, both trying to understand how to assess things like lakes and reservoirs better, use multiple lines of evidence and things like that to kind of support where water quality impairments, which is kind of when those uses aren't being supported, where there might be impairments. We've also got groups right now working on the same kind of thing for flowing waters for our streams and rivers. So we've got crews trying to understand like, you know, you know, how to better assess these waters, what kinds of things we want to measure to be a little more thorough really in in how we're assessing nutrients around the state because we recognize that it's a it's a it's a big concern, and it's also an area that maybe hasn't over, you know, certainly over the last couple dozen years, hasn't gotten as much attention as it as it needs to. So I think that's a, that's a big priority. Certainly also things, I mean, I would say like just broadly from the standards, and this isn't necessarily standard as much as like places where I'm thinking that we're responding a lot to things. I mean, certainly PFOS monitoring and things like that around the state have taken up a lot of, a lot of effort too. So and then things like related to nutrients, you know, expression of those as far as harmful algae blooms and things like that. So those are all some kind of pretty big things that we continue to work on.
Gotcha. Yeah, thanks for the response, Kevin. And thank you for asking the question. Are there any other questions at this point? Feel free to type, type them in. I don't have any other questions in my question and answer box. I'm not seeing any hands raised at this point. So we're just going to give it a couple more seconds here and see if we get any other questions that come in. Or if we have anybody that would like to raise their hand. And then so, just so you know, we're going next in this public hearing is we're after this question and answer session, we're going to move into the hearing portion and making comments. If anybody would like to make, you know, an official comment related to water quality standards, we'll move on and do that. So I'm still not seeing any additional questions at this point.
And I would, Ryan, I'll just offer up to one of the things I liked about this format and the ability to kind of do the small presentation is really to to establish some communication. So if questions come up later from like water quality standards perspective, we'll have a couple of places where my contact information show up from the 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 comment standpoint, but certainly, you know, this is one of the roles I play here, and I'm always I enjoy talking with folks who are interested in talking about standards and questions. So don't hesitate, you know, after this to reach out just with a question at any time. So.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. That's a good transition because I have your contact information on the screen at this point. And so Kevin can be contacted, I guess, with any questions. And then also comments may be sent to Kevin at this address, and that's Kevin Goodwin at Eagle Water Resources Division, PO Box 30458 Lansing, Michigan, 489097958, or good1k@michigan.gov. That's G O O D W I N K at Michigan, M I C H I G A G A N dot gov, or his phone number at 5172904198. I'm reading, just reading that in case there's anybody calling in on the phone at this point. And then again, just as a reminder, the public comment period ends September 21st of this year. And like Kevin had mentioned, comments can go be sent here until September 21st, in case you don't want to make your comments during the hearing portion tonight, which we will now transition into. So at this point, I'd like to invite Dawn to read the opening statement for the hearing.
Right, thanks. Yep. As a reminder, my name is Dawn Roush, and I work for Eagle, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I'm the unit supervisor of the Lakes Erie Huron and Superior Unit, which is in the Surface Water Assessment Section of Eagle's Water Resources Division. I'll be serving as the Hearing Officer today on the Part Four Rules entitled Water Quality Standards and the Part Eight Rules entitled Water Quality-Based Effluent Limit Development for Toxic Substances. Water Resources Division is responsible for administering the Part Four Water Quality Standards and Part Eight Water Quality-Based Effluent Limit Development for Toxic Substances Rules. The law governing those responsibilities is Part 31 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act, 1994, Public Act 451 as amended for Act 451. The Part Four Rules establish water quality requirements for surface waters of the state to protect the public health and welfare, to enhance and maintain the quality of water, and to protect the state's natural resources. The Part Eight Rules establish toxic substance water quality-based controls for the point source discharges that are protective of the designated uses of the surface waters of state. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide the public an opportunity to submit comments whether any of the existing rules should be modified or new rules adopted. The Federal Clean Water Act, Section 303C1, requires that at least once every three years, each state Water Pollution Control Agency holds a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing applicable water quality standards and does appropriate modifying and adopting standards. The process is referred to as the triennial review. As an additional note, Rule 31032 of Act 451 prohibits the department from promulgating any additional rules after December 31st, 2006. However, it's our hope that this prohibition will be rescinded in the future. Therefore, we are moving forward with holding the public hearing to receive suggested modifications to the Part Four and Part Eight Rules. Kevin Goodwin, the Water Quality Standards Coordinator, and I are here today to take your comments.
I thank you, Dawn. I'm just going to go through kind of how the process that we're going to use to take your comments today. When you registered, you had an opportunity to indicate whether you wanted to make your comments or not. We didn't have any indications from that registration that anybody wanted to make a comment. So we're going to go right into if anybody has changed their mind, or if anybody did not pre-register and would like a comment, you'll be able to make that comment at this time. And the way we'll do that is you'll be able to raise, again, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar, and we will call on you to make your comments. We will unmute you so that you can make your comments. And then we are going to give four minutes per person to be able to make your comments so that it's, everybody gets the same opportunity, the same amount of time to comment. And I'll give you about a minute warning before that four-minute time is up. If you have an organization that you're affiliated with, feel free to list that as well as your name before giving your comment. And then as soon as your comment is up or you run out of time, we will call the next person with their hand raised and unmute them so they can make your comments. And again, I didn't see anybody on the phone, but if anybody is listening on the phone, you can also select pound two on your phone, and that will raise your hand in Zoom as well so that we can call on you and unmute you to make your comments. So we're going to go ahead. In Zoom as well, so that we can call on you and unmute you to make your comment. So we're going to go ahead. Uh, do, would anybody like to make a comment, uh, who is on the line tonight related to? Tonight's hearing and the water quality standards and the part four party rules. So we're going to go ahead and, and give it a minute. I don't have any hands raised. That I can see right now. Um, but if anybody would like to make a comment. Now feel, feel free to raise your hand in Zoom and then we will also just for your information. Uh, in case you change your mind, we're going to show that slide again with Kevin's information on it. And we'll, we'll have that on there for a little bit, uh, so you can record that information down or take a photo of it. In case you would like to make a comment later on. And this hearing, as I mentioned before, will be recorded. So you'll be able to try to have that up soon on our YouTube channel in a few days. Uh, in a couple of days, and then you'll be able to re-watch this presentation and the hearing if you'd like. So with that, still not seeing any hands raised. Uh, would anybody like to make a comment before I move on? And we're just going to give it a couple more seconds here to see if anybody would. Like to raise their hand to make a comment tonight or this afternoon. So. See, I'm still not seeing any hands raised. So I'm going to take that, that, uh, that we're not going to have any comments this afternoon, at least on this webinar. So we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll move on from this comment period. Um, Dawn, would you like to read the closing statement at this point then?
Yeah, thanks. Um. The public comment period for taking suggestions regarding the existing rules is open until five P M on Tuesday, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. Comments may be submitted until then and staff will consider the suggestions provided and will determine if changes to the existing rules. Should be made in the future, once the department regains rulemaking authority. Comments may be submitted to Kevin Goodwin at the following address, and I'll read it again in case anybody jumped on the phone. Um, Kevin Goodwin. At Eagle, E G L E. Water Resources Division. P O Box three zero four five eight Lansing, Michigan. The zip code is four eight nine zero nine dash seven nine five eight. You can also be reached by telephone at five one seven two nine zero. Four one nine eight or email at goodwink@michigan.gov, which is G O O D. W I N K at M I C H I G A N dot G O V. Thank you for your comments and cooperation today. We appreciate your interest in suggesting changes to the rules and that you took the time to join us. This public hearing is now closed. Thank you again. Kevin, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would also just like to thank those participated. I. Based on the folks who I knew were going to be on this call, um. I assume we'll be hearing from you in written comment. I know a lot of you have kind of partnered up with comments in the past since we look forward to. Continuing those conversations. I appreciate your interest and, um, attendance and. Uh, look forward to hearing what you've got to say now or in the future. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Kevin and Dawn for, uh, being part of the public hearing today. I am for everyone for calling in. Uh, this will. End of a public hearing and, uh, hope you all have a great rest of your afternoon. Thank you.